Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the City of Gulf Shores Council Work Session Meeting, March the 15th, 2021. This is a discussion where we're going to be having open dialogue about any of the articles that will come up for consideration and vote next Monday. So this is your time. We're going to discuss them in brief, kind of give you an update, an understanding of what's coming up, and then we ask you for any comments you have, any questions. And I know that we just ask you to step to the microphone, and we're glad to hear from you as we make decisions that are important to you and to all of us. So with that, the councilman discussion period, this meeting is Steve Jones.
Nothing today, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. The first item is the Building Department with Brandon Franklin with a Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Today I bring before you the, it's an update to our Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a multi-hazard mitigation plan that the entire county participates in. This plan was originally created back in 2010. We adopted it in 2011. You may ask, you know, what is the Hazard Mitigation Plan? And this, this plan is a comprehensive plan that identifies all of the risks in man-made or natural disasters caused in Baldwin County, and how each community deals with these hazards, and more specifically, how we mitigate each one of them. Some examples are hurricanes, flooding, tornadoes, wildfires. So not just specific Gulf Shores, but the entire community. And like I said, we adopted this in 2010, we updated in 2015, and because of FEMA's requirement, we have to update it again for 2020. So right now, it's in the draft stages, and because of COVID, I would typically be bringing this, we would have a county-wide forum where we'd invite the public in, have any comments, questions. But because of the COVID restrictions, each municipality is actually taking this to the council work sessions, and we're asking everyone here today. I've got some sign-in sheets up front as you come in, if you will, those that haven't signed it, when you are leaving, if you will, just stop by, because this is part of the outreach plan, outreach program that is required by FEMA. And rather than having everybody get together, this is what we're doing to meet those requirements set by FEMA. So again, what this, what this allows us to do is to actually apply to FEMA for hazard mitigation grants. Those grants are your hazard mitigation projects, but it also includes flood mitigation assistance and pre-disaster mitigation programs. So kind of give you an example, some of the plans are, some of the grants that we've actually applied for in the past, trying to mitigate problems. We did the Fifth Street Drainage on the east side of town, that was the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We're actually applying for some hazard mitigation grants right now for some elevation of structures that are located in flood zone areas, and we're looking at providing generators for some of our critical facilities and for the city. So that's kind of what this plan does, is identify those, and we try to mitigate as much as possible. So have any questions, be glad to answer.
Brandon, thank you. Council, any questions or comments? Pre-routine, we do this, whatever, four or five years.
Yes, sir.
Requirement by FEMA.
And again, Mayor, if I can, just emphasize, the sign-in sheets are out on the front table. If you, as you leave, if you will, just sign those for me, and make sure that we meet our outreach requirements.
Thank you, Brandon. Anybody in the council with any questions or comments, or want some clarification of what we're doing? Please sign on, if you haven't signed on the way in, please sign on your way out, so we can count you as being part of this discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Next item on the agenda is from the Engineering Department. We've got two issues there. Mark?
Sir, the first, first of my two items is an ALDOT Cooperative Maintenance Agreement for a new traffic signal. It's being proposed at East Second Street and Highway 182 East. Now, this would be directly in front of Gulf Place, the last phase of Gulf Place, the east part of Gulf Place that we just completed, and there's Gulf Island Grill and Hooters across the street. So this cooperative maintenance agreement is between us and ALDOT, and it will provide for us to maintain the signal once it's been installed. So the signal will provide better traffic circulation for vehicles as well as pedestrians, and this will kind of book in the far east side of our Beach Walking District, which is currently under construction. This will tie into the sidewalks that are being constructed as part of that project, and provide for a signalized crosswalk along Highway 182 to go from north and south at East Second Street. And just for reference, we have, currently have 25 of these maintenance agreements in place. We maintain all the traffic signals in the city. And so therefore, our response times, our ability to go out and address issues with the signals is greatly enhanced over having to send somebody over from West Mobile. This is just kind of a overall map. This is the intersection, we'll have a fully, it'll be a fully signalized intersection, we'll have signals north, south, east, west, and as well as turn lanes on the Beach Boulevard. And then the gray bar that you see is the proposed crosswalk, which ties directly into the main sidewalk that's entering into East Gulf Place. So therefore, our budget implications for this project, signal maintenance is budgeted every year in our operations budget for signal R and M under my listing of accounts, the Engineering Department. And therefore, we recommend approval of this maintenance agreement, and once this is approved, then ALDOT will release us to go out for bid for this traffic signal, which is a budgeted item. And when we do receive the bids, we'll be bringing that back for future council approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. That crosswalk, will there be a pedestrian-activated signal? So if someone walks up there, they can mash the button, and it will change R G after waiting on traffic to get there?
Pedestrian-activated. It will be traffic and pedestrian-activated, and it will be integrated into our synchronized traffic signal system.
Thank you, Mark. Council, do the other council have questions or comments? Down in the audience. Okay, Mark, next.
All right. The next one I have is a bid to McElhenney Construction for the Medical Village Phase 1B improvements. So the, tonight, for y'all's consideration, is to award the bid to McElhenney Construction to construct the Medical Village Access Improvements Phase 1B. Not only will support the South Baldwin Regional Medical Center Freestanding Emergency Department, but also provide for future medical opportunities for the citizens of Gulf Shores. Give you some background, City Open Bid's on Tuesday, March the 9th, 2021, for the Medical Village Access Improvements Phase 1B. McElhenney Construction was the lowest conforming bidder with a bid amount of $1,837,190.25. They also were the Phase 1 Contractor of Record, so they got Phase 2 as well. This project will not only facilitate future medical opportunities for the citizens of Gulf Shores, but also will provide kind of an alternate route from Cotton Creek Drive to Highway 59, and help alleviate some of the traffic congestion at the intersection of Cotton Creek Drive, County Road 4, and Highway 59. The project is scheduled to begin upon award, and will be completed by the end of the year. And this is part of our Vision 2025 related to medical, and some of the goals we set forth in that Vision 2025, we have the responsibility to provide direct access to quality wellness services and emergency care to our citizens and visitors, and we must provide prompt access to our medical facilities. The difference between seconds and minutes is critical. So not only will this tie into the new infrastructure that's almost complete, that has, that's a direct connection from the FED to Highway 59, it will connect that FED, the Freestanding Emergency Department, up to Cotton Creek Drive. So anybody coming from Orange Beach, any medical ambulance service coming from the Beach Express, coming from the Orange Beach area, will be able to access the FED directly off of Cotton Creek Drive. To kind of help understand that, got a vicinity map here, and it shows Phase 1B, and how that will go north and south and connect to Phase 1. And then it opens up, we have 11 acres, 15 and a half acres, as well as 3.6 acres, and the existing, what used to be formerly Sacred Heart Medical Building. So this also provides access to all of those parcels that the city has set aside for future medical opportunities and other business opportunities. And you can see the FED and the vicinity map as well. It's currently under construction. The roadway itself will be a boulevard, it will be two lanes of traffic with bike lanes, sidewalks, and landscaping, all of which are included in this bid package. We have $2,42,535 budgeted in the fiscal year 2021 for this project, so we're about $200,000 under budget. And all expenditures will be part of our city's matching costs that are required for the $14.4 million bill grant we received in November of 2019. So therefore, staff recommends awarding this contract to McElhenney Construction in amount not to exceed $1,837,190.25. Normally, we would add a contingency, but because of the grant, we have to award it for the actual dollar amount. So that's why this is a little bit different than we normally see. We bump it up a little bit, put some contingency in there. But because this is a grant-specific project, we have to award it for the exact dollar amount. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Council, anybody questions or comments?
Mark, is the traffic light on Cotton Creek Drive permitted and included in this phase?
No, it's not. It is a potential future location for a traffic signal. That signal would be a city signal, so if we see that it's warranted, we would not have to permit it through another agency. It would simply be coming back to the council, and then asking for the funding to make that signal happen.
Okay, thank you. This providing access to the FED, and with the city owning the Sacred Heart Building, which is, was built to be a medical office building, with doctors' offices, a surgical center, diagnostics, a lot of future medical opportunities there on land, on a building that we own. We're just going to have to find the right tenant to go in there. And then the 32 acres that go north from there that you see divided by this road is available for future hospital potential. I have to believe, one day, this island is going to be, is going to require and need an ambulance, a hospital. And in doing so, we've acquired the property that can connect all that and have kind of a medical complex as we grow in the future, as well as, as you get on the Highway 59 size, side, potential future commercial property. So I think it is, this roadway and connecting to this FED solves a lot of future questions to me about how do we continue to grow with the proper medical care, doctors in our community, to provide a better medical opportunity for our people that live here, our residents, but also our visitors. So that's my comment. Anybody in the audience have anything to add? Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, also, I wanted to remind you and everybody that we met about two weeks ago with the new CEO of South Baldwin Hospital, and they are committed and scheduled to open up the Freestanding Emergency Department building there May 1st. So that'll be there and available. But what's key with our Fire and Rescue Department is that our ambulances would be able to go there and not have to go all the way up to Foley.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody have anything else? Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Police Department, Dan, Deputy Chief Dan, the regulator of rental motorcycles and motor-driven cycles.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We are presenting today some proposed changes to the language that I had previously submitted to the ordinance regarding rented motorcycles and motor-driven, or rented motorcycles and motor-driven cycles. The proposed changes that, that are different than what was previously mentioned is the ordinance would now cover motorcycles and rented motorcycles and motor-driven cycles. The renters must be 18 years of age, and they must have a motorcycle endorsement regardless of state they are from. Rentals must also clearly display marked, be marked with identify, identification such as rental, the rental company by lettering or flag. Probably the most significant change is this eliminates the termination clause of the rented businesses operating rental motorcycles and motor-driven scooters, or cycles, effective January 1 of next year. So that, that's eliminated in the new language.
Thank you, Dan. Council, any future questions? I thought we had more questions. Was there anything else of significance?
No, sir. If you remember, there were a lot of requirements placed on the business of the rental business, such as to provide the equipment, liability insurance. Then the, the operator has to sign a, a agreement that they will agree to drive the, the motorcycle or motor-driven cycle in a, in a careful manner, you know, be compliant with all laws and regulations with regard to traffic. All of that is still in there. These are just the changes that are proposed.
There was a weight discussion last time about the weight of the, of the vehicle. Is that solved in here? Do we, what's the deal with that?
Yes, sir. The language regarding that is, is, it now includes motorcycles and motor-driven cycles. They're the two classifications were with regard to the weight. That's why we changed motorcycle, we added motorcycle to the ordinance.
That's my only questions.
There were several questions about electric bicycles and pedal-assisted bicycles. Can you update us on the impacts of that category?
Yes, sir. So anything in Alabama is considered a motor-driven cycle or motorcycle if it has a throttle assist. A pedal assist is still considered a bicycle, so the applicable laws would not apply to a pedal assist. It has to have an independent throttle in order to assist with the driver of the, the operator of the motor-driven scooter for it to be considered a motor-driven scooter. Pedal assist is still considered a bicycle.
And is not affected by this ordinance?
Correct. Also, there's, you know, we're having these considerations and changing this ordinance because of the, the safety concern within our community of the operations that have been up to this point in our community. So this changes kind of the regulatory environment that they have to operate on. And I know previously in the ordinance, we had automatically revoked their right to continue business as of January 2022. We took that clause out in the hopes that this vendor, or any vendor that wants to operate these type businesses, will do it the right way and in a safe way, so that it can work in our community. However, we have the right at any time, if through the supervision and surveillance of the operating of this business, we see that it continues to be unsafe or counterproductive in our community, we have the right to revoke the license at any time with a hearing. Is that correct? Yeah, that would be at the council's discretion, but yes, that, that is correct. I believe having a, the license endorsement requirement will, will hopefully cause the accident, the, the accidents caused by the operator of the rented motor-driven cycles to go down, because an independent state has deemed them qualified to operate such vehicle on the roadway. We believe, we hope, the accidents will go down, and the injuries resulting from those accidents will also go down. The other, the other thing about that, we're, we're not real sure how the reckless driving and the careless driving and the driving on the sidewalks and bikeways and things like that will change. Hopefully, it will go down based on the fact that the awareness is increased on the part of the operator, because they are signing that waiver knowing that they can be fined, ticketed, or arrested, subject to city ordinance for that careless operation. So ideally, it's in the message, and it's in the awareness. So we should, we should see a, hopefully we'll see a decrease in all of that.
But Dr. Dyken, to your point that if it doesn't happen, and the police continues to see some of the things they saw this last year, then there's a 10-day notice, like any business license, that we noticed the applicant or the business license holder, and then that notice is scheduled for your action, and, and the possibility of immediate revocation based on that notice and hearing.
Great. And then the other issue, there are concerns about not only the safety, but the damage to personal property that has occurred through the renters that do this. And previously, you know, having underage renters using these cycles, if indeed that happened, typically, they didn't have insurance to cover damage of first people's, you know, our citizens' personal property. And, and so this ordinance does include the requirement for the operator of this business to have liability to cover the cost of repairing damage for our citizens that are in carbon. Is that correct? Yes, it does. That's, that's a requirement under the, the order.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dan, do you have any information on what surrounding states have a motorcycle endorsement, like Georgia, Tennessee, Mississippi, or Louisiana?
I do not. I, I know I previously lived in, the states that I previously lived in, license endorsement was not required in the states that I lived in, but it varies state by state. With the CCs, anything under 50 CCs in states that I've previously lived in do not require any sort of a motorcycle endorsement in order to operate an under 50. Louisiana, some of the local ones, I, I, I don't know. It, we get people from all over the country here, and I think that's why the clause is in there, or the portion is in there that requires the endorsement from that state, and endorsement from that state in order for them to rent.
Okay, thanks.
Dan, this, I know it's a little late in the race on this stuff, but as we looked at the videos where they run into people's trees and shrubbery and different things, and eventually it could be worse, I didn't notice on the moped or motorcycle, whatever it is, a identification number, where if you had a video like we saw, that could reflect the date, the time, and who had that motorcycle, if they have more than one blue one or more than one red one or something.
Well, the, the incident, all four incidents that we showed here were unreported to the police department. You know, that was a concern, because, you know, the, those accidents were on, and the private property damage were on top of the accidents we already had. So it would have been nice that we would have been notified for those, so we could have come out and taken some sort of a, an action on that. And, and it's no telling how many more. The gentleman that, that submitted that said he had additional ones, that he just used these. So it, it may be helpful, but it's not an absolute. It wouldn't give us, I mean, it would have to be pretty big to be able to see it from a review. Now, if we were acting on it, had an operation of a camera live, and we could zoom into one stopped, it's a, a red light, we could zoom in on that. But most of what we would be doing, would be in review from a wider angle, and it would make it a little bit tougher to, to get the identifiers. But I think us, the police department, working with the business owner in this case, and, and the requirements put forth by the, the change in the, in the ordinance here, I think we will be able to identify any rider that would be out there doing this, these sort of acts.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Any other council questions? Audience, anybody, is applicant here would like to say anything, or have, anybody got any questions or comments? Thank you, Dan.
Good job, Dan.
Next item on the agenda is a CUP Site Plan Approval for Phoenix Gulf Shores 2 condominium Lea.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This is a request for a conditional use permit. You all don't typically see site plans, but a supplemental requirement for a conditional use permit is a site plan. So you'll have the opportunity to take a look at this site plan and weigh in on it. This is a public hearing item, so this won't be on your agenda next Monday. It'll be on your agenda sometime later in April. The request is for conditional use permit approval, a site plan approval for a 24-story, 110-unit condominium development. They're providing a 24-foot public beach access, and the property is located in the 500 block of East Beach Boulevard. You'll notice there that these are 22 habitable stories, rather than the full 24, and that's because our zoning ordinance measures building height in the BT zoning district as habitable floors. It doesn't count parking or lobbies or circulation in the calculation. In accordance with Article 10-2B, deviations of the zoning ordinance, the applicant seeks to deviate from strict compliance with underlying zoning and overlay district standards. Therefore, this conditional use permit is required. If you'll remember, about 18 months ago, you all passed an amendment to the zoning ordinance that allowed deviations from the zoning ordinance within overlay districts to be reviewed and approved through the CUP process, rather than going through the variance process to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So if a project meets the, the goal and intent of the long-range plan, the future land use plan, then you all have the ability within those overlay districts to grant these deviations from the zoning ordinance. The property is located on East Beach Boulevard in the 500 block. It's, it's right across the street from the new Comfort Inn and Suites. It's located on about a little over three acres. It's in between the Colonnades and our point of view, Royal Palms is just a little bit more to the east. You can see Gulf State Park there in the green. The request is a site plan, again, 24 stories, 22 habitable, 110-unit condo building. It has 66 three-bedroom units and 44 two-bedroom units. The amenities include indoor and outdoor pools, hot tub and fitness room, a lazy river, and slides. The CUP is, there are two requests from deviations from the zoning ordinance. The first is a reduced west-side yard setback from 35 feet 10 inches to 24 feet 2 inches, and one additional habitable story of residential units above what is permitted through the Beach Area Overlay District's bonus program, which I don't know that, that you've seen a, a bonus height or bonus density request before, but I'll explain that as well. So this is a comparison of what's proposed in the left-hand column, and what's permitted by right. by right under the BT four zoning district. The items that are highlighted are those that, uh, the applicant is seeking, uh, the deviation, uh, through the CUP process. So the first, again, 22 habitable stories, 24 total. The BT four zoning district allows 20 habitable with 21 that are permitted by right with the bonus density, uh, that's being sought. Uh, the number of units, they're proposing 110, they're permitted 133. Of course, additional bonus with the overlay. Dwelling units, they're proposing 34.6 units per acre, they're, they're permitted by right 42. The building coverage is at 26% with 65% being the maximum permitted by right. Again, you can see impervious surface landscaped area, so they're below the maximum requirements for building coverage and impervious coverage, uh, floor area ratio, and they're above in, um, uh, open space that's, uh, provided. Again, with the side yard setbacks, they're providing the 35 foot 10 that's required, but they're requesting a 24 foot 10 deviation on the west side yard setback. They meet the parking requirements for both vehicles and, uh, bicycles. Just going back, that's a, a rendered plan, uh, of the site plan. There, there are really four different elements of the site plan. The first is, is what's called a retail liner. This is a, a building that will be provided, uh, to activate the, the beach boulevard frontage and that'll be along, it will line the parking deck and then moving into the property, there will be a, a five-story parking deck and then beyond that will be, uh, the condominium tower and then the amenity deck, uh, on the pool side. The building architecture complies with all the zoning ordinance requirements. You can see a side elevation there that's, uh, a little bit covered up, um, and then the front elevation on, on, uh, Beach Boulevard, 22 habitable stories. Stucco is a permitted material, uh, in the architectural standards of the zoning ordinance. It'll be stucco and it'll be painted shades of both gray with gold trim, as you can see in the elevation. The zoning ordinance requires taller buildings to, to have a base, a middle and a cap. And, uh, the architect, uh, went, uh, into great detail in creating that base. You can see with the parking structure at the bottom and then the middle section and capping it all off with the, with the ornamentation along the parapet as, as well as the phoenix there in the center. So it meets the zoning ordinance requirements there for architecture. Uh, the parking deck also has decorative panels to shield the view of cars and we encourage them to include this retail liner, um, along the frontage, which you can see there, it's labeled bicycle station down at the bottom of that elevation. So this gets into the bonus height. So after Envision Gulf Shores, the zoning ordinance was updated to incentivize new development providing for public, uh, amenities in their development. So one of those incentives is the bonus height program. Uh, so you can see it's table 10 dash 3B. So for developments that either, uh, provide public access to the beach or public parking or cash contribution, uh, there are these different choices of bonuses that are available, either additional units, additional gross floor area or additional height. You can see highlighted there, uh, the dedication of a, a public access. They can choose from these three bonuses. They have requested one story of additional height. Um, this, uh, this proposal does comply with all the use regulations. Condos are permitted use by right within the BT four zoning district. It complies with all, uh, area and dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance with the exception of one, uh, story, additional story of building height as well as a 24 to side setback. It complies with all standards of the beach overlay district and it does utilize the incentive height bonus with the dedication of that public access, that they're requesting one additional height and bonus. So just to show what they're providing as a public amenity, the area in that sketch that's highlighted in yellow is all a, a public, uh, dedication. Um, it's an easement that they're, they're placing on the property that easement is currently under review. There's a condition that that, the easement agreement will be reviewed and approved by the city prior to building permit. It's about 10, it's a little under 10,000 square feet. You see shown within that easement along the western property line, that's a six-foot elevated boardwalk that will be constructed by the developer to provide access, um, from Beach Boulevard to the beach. They're also constructing a dune walkover as part of that public access. Um, in the front, you'll see a gray box. That's what they're proposing as that retail liner. Um, it's a little up in the air as to what the use will be there, but the developer has agreed to work with the city on providing some public, uh, amenity uses in that location, uh, once the building is, is under construction. So in exchange for those, the, the bonus height program allows them to get an additional floor. So going from 20 habitable to 21, that's kind of the starting point with this, with that, uh, public beach access dedication. So getting into the conditional use permit, we're starting at 21 stories. Um, deviations are permitted. Uh, deviations from strict compliance with underlying zoning and overlay district standards may be allowed if such deviations are found to comply with the goals and intent of the future land use plan. Applications requesting deviations from zoning standards shall follow the CUP, uh, review and approval process, and that's what is before you today and will be up for public hearing in a few weeks. The, the request here is a west side yard setback reduction from 35 feet 10 inches to the proposed 24 feet 2 inches. And within that 24 feet 2 inches will be the dedicated beach access. And in analyzing this, we looked at, you know, what would the zoning ordinance yield if we were just to apply that and not to consider this deviation? And each floor of this building has five units. So if they required that 35-foot 10 side setback that would squeeze them down another 11 feet, they could only get four units per floor, which means in order to get their 110 units, which is still 23 units below what they're permitted by right, the building would need to go up. Um, so it would re, require an increase in building height if that side setback were, uh, required, which would mean 28 habitable stories. They couldn't get that within their 20, so that pushes us, us over to the, the height, um, deviation. So if they were to go four units per floor instead of five, it would push them on top of their deck. Right now, the deck is out front, which would, could drive the building up farther and that would allow them to get even more units up to their 133. So right now, by allowing them this deviation of the side setback, it keeps them at five units per floor, not pushing them to four and driving the building up and driving them forward and over their parking deck. We have an illustration that kind of illustrates that, that's, that's a little tough to, to wrap your head around. But in looking at this, by allowing the deviation of the side setback as well as one additional story in building height, we feel like it's a better solution than just strictly applying, um, the zoning ordinance. Sometimes the zoning ordinance just doesn't yield the best results and I think this is a case in point. So the things that we need to look at are, is this, uh, in line with the future land use plan? So this area is in that red area, that's commercial mixed use. Um, condominium buildings are, uh, called for in the commercial mixed use, uh, land use area. It also implements goals of the future land use plan by providing the public beach access we talked about. It also, uh, implements goals of future land use plan by providing the active uses of Long Beach Boulevard and the, the landscaping and pedestrian oriented uses. This is actually an image from Envision Gulf Shores. Um, so you can see the recommended building on the left there and the discouraged building on the right. The recommended building has retail liner in front of the garage, a standalone garage, and then the tower. It's all set off of one property line providing access into the garage and to the beach. Um, I don't think there's a better example out there of, of what, um, this building is doing other than what's right there in our Envision Gulf Shores plan, um, which calls for orienting buildings to maximize views of the Gulf. This is a single loaded corridor with all the units fronting the Gulf, um, so it's a very shallow building because it's not a double loaded corridor with units fronting the north as well. So it's definitely oriented to maximize views to the Gulf, provide parking decks with access to ground level, which this proposal does, provide landscaping along Beach Boulevard, encourage active uses, provide additional density and building height for public beach access, which, uh, is being requested here. So this is completely in line with the Envision Gulf Shores. Um, and again, just analyzing the comparison of what they're requesting, which is shown there on the left versus what they could do by right, um, under the BT four zoning as proposed, five units per floor, 24 stories, 22 habitable with a total of 110 units. What they could do by right is shown there to the right. It's a double loaded corridor. You've got 20 habitable stor, stories which meets the zoning ordinance on top of five levels of parking and, uh, maximizes the, the yield on the property to 133 units. Uh, we felt like based on this analysis that what is being proposed warranted the, the side setback variance or deviation as well as the, um, the building height for one additional story. So we wanted to look at, you know, what, would this be out of character with the surrounding context of Long Beach Boulevard? Um, we don't think that it is. Royal Palms, uh, to the east is 14 stories. Colonnades right next door is 20. And then as you work west, westerly down Beach Boulevard, Lighthouse 18, Seawind 20, San Carlos 19, all lower, but still in line. This is not going to stick out just by being 24 total stories, 22 habitable. It's still in line with a lot of the condo developments that are on East Beach today. Another consideration that, uh, the applicant has made is just the placement of the building. That, uh, heavy light blue line is their rear setback for the tower, which really lines up with the front setback for the towers on other properties. Um, you can see the CCL line there in blue. So the Colonnades and, and other towers adjacent to this will actually have views to the east and west because the fact that they, they're setting this building closer to the road and allowing those existing buildings to have their views preserved, uh, which is not a requirement. Uh, they just did this and, and I think it's a benefit to the surrounding, uh, development Looking at, uh, public beach accesses, uh, so all of the, the blue callouts are existing public beach access points and the, the one in pink is what's proposed, uh, with this development. It's about two-thirds of a mile from, um, East Gulf Place, uh, public beach access. So it'll provide a great opportunity for folks within walking distance on, on the east side of, uh, 59. Um, so it's a, it's a great location for a new public beach access. So in summary, the proposed development has many positive attributes, uh, opposed to one strictly focused on building up to the full allowance of the zoning ordinance. So this proposes to decrease the development density by 22%. It decreases the total building height allowed by separating the building from the parking structure and decreases permitted development intensity, the floor area of the building by 20%. Site plan provides design concepts that are promoted by the zoning ordinance, future land use plan and Envision Gulf Shores, including activation of the street furniture, public beach access, including a boardwalk and dune walkover and well-designed public spaces, amenities and conveniences for residents and visitors. Staff is recommending approval, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the, the CUP and, uh, they forwarded these recommendations. Number one, an out dot turnout permit shall be submitted. An approved FAA Form 740, 7460 shall be submitted prior to building permit. And a traffic impact study was submitted. It's under review now. Um, so completion of any improvements recommended by the TIS will be the responsibility of the applicant. All beach mouse habitat permitting shall be submitted to the city prior to the building permit and US Fish and Wildlife must approve the lighting plan to be turtle compliant. Number six, city approval of the easement agreements that they're under review now for public beach access and public use shall be approved prior to building permit. The fire marshal has provided phased approval with a couple of conditions and this is also, uh, conditioned upon city council approval of the deviations for the side setback, the one story of additional building height as well as just, uh, approving the incentive bonus of one story for the public beach access. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lee. Counsel, any questions, comments? What's the next step for this, Lee? Will we see this next Monday or is it, you got advertising into this, do on this?
No, sir. We'll advertise it and it will likely be on an agenda, uh, later in April.
Okay. That's what I thought. Anybody in the audience, any questions or comments? Very detailed and well presented.
It was.
Explanation. That was, I don't, answered every question that I had, so thank you, Lee.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is a public assembly permit grant.
Follow that, Grant.
I was gonna say, that's a tough, that's a tough act to follow. He's new. I've been here 10, 12 years now. So good afternoon. We have before you another public assembly permit application. Although the Zydeco Crawfish Festival unfortunately will not proceed this year, Mike Pate with Harley Sports is interested and has applied for, uh, an application to host a 5K Zydeco Crawfish Run. In conjunction with the festival, we've had this successfully in the Waterway Village. Start finish line is right there near Acme Oyster House. They run 5K, they run to the West Fifth Street, turn around, come back to West Third Street, head south to Clubhouse Drive, over to West Second, back north to Clubhouse from, um, West Second up to West Canal and then back to the start finish line at Acme. I did not, uh, put together a, a map for you this afternoon and I apologize. It's in the application, uh, for you. So with this, um, and the COVID regulations that are in place, Mike has put in safety measures, uh, related to the social distancing and the face mask wearing, et cetera. Um, as you know, that on April the 9th, our governor's, uh, coming back out with additional, um, safer at home orders, so we'll adapt and adjust the application and the plan right up until whatever her next, uh, phase of the health and safety orders come out as. But this is a, uh, application that we feel is appropriate and are in full support of this run moving forward. It's been before all the different, uh, city departments for their review. Again, this is, this will be the sixth time that we've had this, uh, in this particular area. The only difference this year is that the Zydeco Crawfish Festival will not be part of this, uh, this event. So with that, uh, you'll be seeing this next week with a recommended, uh, approval of this application.
Thank you, Grant. Counsel, any questions? Audience, any comments or questions? Thank you, Grant. That's the last agenda item, but I got a couple of reports I want to ask to be presented. First from Brandon, I want you to kind of give us a snapshot of the latest that you, like you told us this morning at staff meeting about the COVID situation.
Yes, sir. Just, you know, the governor extended her orders last time she was up till April 9th and she said at that point that she would lift the mask mandate for sure unless something just drives it changed. But I do want to say that due to all the restrictions that have been in place, the vaccinations that are now taking place, the numbers have drastically gone down specifically in Baldwin County. From yesterday to today, there was only, uh, 12 reported new cases in Baldwin County. So just knowing that the statewide, they've issued, they've given out more than 1.2 million vaccines. So where January through the first part, part of February, they were getting out anywhere between 50 and 75,000 vaccines a day, that, just like with anything, the more you do it, the better you get. They're up to now administering over 150,000 vaccines a day statewide. And that's been through cooperation with all of our, uh, Department of Public Health, but also with a lot of local organizations stepping up and assisting with our local hospitals and clinics to be able to administer. So you've got churches in different areas that are helping assist and volunteering, giving out these vaccinations. So it's really making a difference. One of the things that it really see is the school reports throughout Baldwin County. Get those and back in January, February, you were seeing 40 to 45 new cases a day throughout the entire school districts and now the last two reports that I've got from the county, there were six on each of them. So big change there. And also we were doing three calls of And also, we were doing three calls a week with the county and the local hospitals and Alabama Department of Public Health, and the numbers have gotten so low now throughout with the hospitals and ICUs that we've reduced that call now to once a week. So really seeing a big difference. I guess, you know, until that April 9th order, keep wearing the mask and please get vaccinated, and, you know, we're doing our parts here, trying to help our citizens and anything we can do, and feel free to reach out to me as well, and I can try to put you in touch. There's a lot of people stepping up to do it, like I said, with the churches, still giving them OI, got CVS, Walgreens coming on board shortly to start helping administer the vaccines, so really seeing a big difference, Mayor.
Brandon, thank you. The city reached out a week or so ago to all eligible, over 65 residents of the city of Gulf Shores to sign up if they wanted to get vaccinated. We got over 500. We've got that vaccination scheduled for them tomorrow, for people that have already registered and been accepted and approved. We intend to do that again, assuming that as we get lower in age groups, that if we've got residents that want to get vaccinated and haven't been able to, then we'll facilitate again, as long as we can work with South Baldwin Regional Medical Center, to be able to create. We will do that again, so expect, watch if you haven't been vaccinated because you weren't eligible, or you just didn't get a time, that watch our website. If it's available, we'll do this again and make sure we help everyone get vaccinated. But as was mentioned, nothing has changed related to the mask requirements or the social distancing like you see in this meeting yet, but we're hopeful for the future that things will get better. Dan, I know that we've, I've had a whole lot of comments about the noise this weekend. Can you kind of update us as to what you're seeing today? And this is the loud vehicles. I have more emails and texts on this of any single incident I've ever heard. I know you've been fighting it, but I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mayor. We saw it firsthand Friday night. There was a car show, a truck show in Orange Beach, and several of the participants bled over into Gulf Shores. Keith Delmore and I were in contact along with you throughout the weekend. We beefed up our traffic unit. We changed their hours and had them come out. We don't have the numbers yet, but we know there were probably close to 100 traffic stops conducted by our officers over the course of the weekend. I think we made 16 custodial arrests Friday night. I think there were 13 or 14 Saturday night. We had numerous reports of, you know, we had the same, I saw it firsthand. The trucks were driving loud music, tinted windows, revving their engines. As a matter of fact, I was speaking to some of the officers today, and they said they would be on a traffic stop, and multiple other trucks would come through trying to distract them off of the traffic stop, squealing their wheels, making loud music, playing music loud and all that. So we did everything we could, considering, you know, the circumstances this weekend, and were very effective in shutting it down. Sunday was clearly better than Saturday was. Some of them were leaving town, but I saw a lot of trucks out Sunday, and they were, there was a higher degree of compliance on Sunday with regard to city ordinances and state laws by the participants on Sunday than there were on Saturday until we got our arms around it. The other thing over the weekend, we heard a lot of complaints regarding parking down in Gulf Place. I know I spoke to the Beach Patrol yesterday, the beach officer, he wrote 21 parking tickets in the east, the resident parking. If we could do anything, we could maybe remind residents to get the current hurricane sticker because that's what's valid. I think there were a lot of complaints about people not having the current hurricane sticker, which allows, which is the identification for them to park there. So if we can message that out and get that word out that the old ones aren't good anymore, it's the new ones. And I can tell you, I would bet we, several more warnings were given out to cars that had the older stickers and things like that, that we're just trying to get the word out so we can. We're also ordering to show what we're doing. We've ordered some parking lots, parking boots, place on a vehicle that's out of compliance, put a sticker on the vehicle, so not only do they know then that they're in, you know, they're not in compliance, but it's also, those will also be used as a deterrent. Someone's going to come out, look to park illegally, they're going to see those boots and choose to park elsewhere. That's, we believe that'll be effective measure to curb some of the parking complaints down in Gulf Place.
Dan, thank you. I just wanted to make, let you talk about that because I received so many comments from our community about it. I wanted at least anyone listening to understand, you know, it was overwhelming, the numbers that were down there, and I think that our police did the best they could do to deal with what they could deal with, but also send the message to the others that that's not, it's not okay here.
Yes, sir. We were aware of it, and we beefed up enforcement over the weekend. We think it was effective. We'll certainly take a strong look at it next year again in advance of the car show.
Dan, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we considered in full spring break mode at this time, Deputy Chief?
Based on my views of the beach yesterday, yes, sir, we are.
Okay. Traditionally, I have noticed that we have assistance from Baldwin County Sheriff's Office and other agencies. Is that going to be necessary this year?
They are. Baldwin County is helping us out, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
One other comment that I have under the mayor update. We went through an election a year ago now, and during that election, I know I heard, and I think we all heard, a lot from our residents about we weren't engaging them in a way, and we weren't listening, and we weren't asking them for their input. We heard you. We've not done anything about that yet because we did not feel like we could be effective in this type of venue where we're trying to do most of this online. The most, the majority of the people that listen to these or participate in these are online. They're not sitting in the room here. In conversations with the governor's office and with the April 9th, no mask, right now, they're planning not to release the mask requirement April the 9th, and assuming that that happens, we have scheduled for April the 20th, a town hall meeting that we will have, to be determined probably in here as best we can, where we're hopeful that we can get enough people to show up for us to talk about collectively all the things that's going on in the city. The things that we're starting and working on, which you've heard a lot about medical, but you heard a lot more tonight than you've probably heard before. You see a lot of the transportation improvements that we're dealing with because that really is, we're dealing with ALDOT, and we're dealing with grant monies. It's not something that really has public input scenarios, but the medical does. So that, what we want to do is want to talk about medical. We want to talk about parks and new parks and programs. We want to talk about our changes that is coming in our fire department and police department, the changes that we're working on in education. We want to have a dialogue with our public in person so that you can communicate with us. And we did this before in Envision, in Envision 2025, the Envision program, where we gave you stickers and you wrote down on little sticky pads what it was you want to see from your city. We haven't done that. We need to do that. To do that, we need you here. So on April the 20th, be paying attention, we're going to have those meetings, we're going to do it in place like this, and hopefully we'll be able to get more people in here because the hope is that if they're going to reduce the mask mandate, then maybe they can increase the 25% capacity mandate and let us have a few more people together. But we're going to keep doing this till we have an opportunity to share our vision, share our world, get your input, do exactly what we said we would do. So April the 20th, mark your calendar, and please plan to be here and communicate with us so we can help work together to make this city the best it can be. Council, anybody else have anything to add? Thank you for attending. We'll do this next Monday. We stand adjourned.